Well, there's Joe.
As the famous astronaut once said, "Let's light this candle." Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome everybody to the March 5th, 2024 Federal Way City Council. We've got a very busy agenda here for you. And let's see here, we're gonna go just jump right into Mayor's emerging issues and report. Oh, thank you very much. Okay, and then Bill Vodino is working on the PowerPoint here. Bill, let me know when you're ready. It's great to see this many people here. And Craig, when it's your turn, I'm gonna have you come up, so get ready. But I don't see any green, I there's there's no green. Anyway, all we've got to you. Yeah, that's right, that's right. All right, we are go. All right, everybody, we have, you know, we were thinking about this the other day. Because of the pandemic, you know, it's been exactly four years since the pandemic struck. And because that actually was right around when we were getting out of winter, we I don't think we've had a one of these neighborhood connection meetings for over four years as a result of this. Now, we've had, we had one that was digital, but we are having our first live neighborhood connection town hall meeting at the if you haven't seen the new Olympic View Elementary, it'll be worth the cost of admission. And it's Olympic View Elementary School, it's absolutely beautiful. We're gonna, it's this Thursday, so two days from now, at 6:00 PM. The address is there, it's right there, right off 26th, you're right in the heart of Twin Lakes. Hope you can make it, council's gonna be there, city staff is gonna be there. We're essentially taking City Hall staff, the leadership, and taking it out in the neighborhoods. We want to hear from people from all over the community. I always joke that Rick Perez, our senior traffic engineer, should probably be mic'd up before we get in there because he kind of takes over the show. Everybody has all these questions about that, about traffic and traffic projects and all that. So we're gonna have all the directors, myself, answer questions. But the most important part is to hear from people out in the community. And it's it's good to get back to normal, full normal, and and talk about the different things. We'll talk about a lot of the things that you some may have heard at the State of the City address and and recent changes in Olympia, which we'll talk about in a moment. All right, next slide. All right, so, some of you may have received a letter, the Sidewalk Repair informational letter. And I want to let you know, I found out about it when when it was brought over to my one of my office. I want to say, first of all, you know, being the chief executive officer of the city, I'm responsible for what happens under the roof. And, you know, I'm responsible ultimately for that. And we've got a great staff working here at the city, they work really hard. I didn't see the letter before it went out, and I probably would have made some some changes. But I want to let you know that we have put, if anybody received one of these letters, we we have put the response, it was unsigned, had a number of issues. Probably the most regrettable part of it is, there was a picture that was shown that was as an example, but a lot of people who got the letter thought that it was about their particular property. Well, you can imagine that that caused a lot of concern. And it also had a parcel number, which seemed very specific to them, like it was a notice of violation. So we take responsibility for that, I do. Something like that is not gonna happen again, I need to see, we need to see things. We we, you know, it didn't meet our standards. And I want to let you know that our Public Works Director has sent out a follow-up letter that is signed and and takes accountability for it. We've got a great Public Works Department. I think what they were trying to do, and what we are trying to do, is make sure we're clear about certain things. But what we, and I think it was also important for us to say, hey, you know, we apologize for this, we apologize for the confusion. It was not specific to those parcel properties. We are sending, and in the in the mail now, a follow-up letter to everybody who got the letter to clarify. Because it went out so deep that we wanted to make sure that we captured everybody. In fact, actually, even as I went back to my office between the preliminary study session and tonight and this one, I received yet another letter from someone who really thought it was a code violation against them. So we'll get it fixed and and we'll make sure that it's very clear. And these things happen, but how how we respond to those is, I think, matters more. So thank you, EJ, for helping out with that. And we'll make it clear to everybody, I think it was about the responsibilities of of maintenance of sidewalks, but we always, the bottom line I want everybody to know is, we always address these on a case-by-case basis. And we are working on a a fund for people who are not in a position to repair a sidewalk. You know, we always try to figure out, what is the cause of of the problem with the sidewalk? Is it, you know, is it the city's fault? Is it the, you know, what are the circumstances? And then we look at, you know, whether a payment plan is necessary, or whether there is a, what's the, what's the phrase of fund or a? A grant, thank you, I couldn't think of the word. So there, we're working on a grant program as well, to make sure that people who are not in a position to to fix a sidewalk that may be attributed to their property, that they're not unduly impacted. So though, all those factors. But the the manner in which it was sent out did not meet our standards, it will never happen again. All right, let's let's move on, okay. Mayor's emerging issues, upcoming community events. We have the King County Elections folks in this building, they do great work. And it's really, you know, as we say, probably the most cherished right that we all share as as citizens is our right to vote. King County Elections Vote Center here at City Hall, March 9th through the 12th. In the Patrick Mar Room, which is the big briefing room down at the bottom of the stairs. Saturday, March 9th, 10:00 to 4:00, 10:00 AM to 4:00, March, Monday, March 11th, 8:30 AM to 6:00 PM. And then Election Day, Tuesday, March 12th, 8:30 AM to 8:00 PM. They assist voters who need help in completing ballots, new voter registration and issuing voter cards, updating current voting records, provide training staff, a trained staff and specialized equipment to help those with disabilities cast a private independent ballot. Okay, next, we have, we had the Business Safety Summit. You know, the most important thing that any government at any level does is protect its citizens from crime and make sure that we're doing everything we can to make sure that you've got a safe city. Our chief and our dedicated law enforcement officers, you know, do everything they can do, we're all in this together. And what we wanted to do is bring, once again, this is the second time we've done this with the Business Safety Summit. I think the first one was a year ago. You've got a screenshot there, we, it was last week. And, you know, there is movement. I do want to let you know that we are working on staffing up, we've got, in the budget, we've got room for 150 officers, police officers. And right now, we have hired, I think we're up to 145. But what's significant, and this is going to be very important, 16 of those officers are in the academy. So every month, you're gonna see two or three more officers come onto the street. And we are really seeing a real sharp increase in the number of applications. And we're working a number of, we've got 16 individuals going through the academy and fully staffing. We, this is a budget year, and we, my budget recommendation, we had a presentation earlier today about this issue, about police staffing. And it'll be my recommendation to the council through the budget process that we increase and add yet another four positions to take us to a ratio that will be, I think, 1.52 per thousand, which is about where we were historically back in in 2008. We fell back because of the Great Recession in 2008, which is now 16 years ago. And we've been working our way backward, excuse me, working our way back to get to a point where we get to staffing where we need it. So right now, we're 150 authorized officers. Hopefully, at the end of that process, subject to council approval, we'll be at 154. But it's always, with retirements and and other issues, it's always, you know, you know, a challenge to make sure that you've got every one of those positions filled. But we're we're working on it, and we're, that's something that's going on. So with regard to the Business Safety Summit, we had a number of business owners in the community talking about different things that that are critically important to make sure that we can help them. It's really about making sure we're all on the same page. As we talked about, the mobile surveillance trailers. Many of you have probably seen the blue lights out in the parking lots, those are monitored. Some are privately owned, some of those are owned by the city. We have ordered, thanks to the council and and their support and wisdom, we purchased another six of those using ARPA grant money, $330,000 of federal money to be able to put those out in the community to make sure when things, to make sure our parking lots are safe. And so also, the chief is actually just in a meeting this week, or actually, that would have been yesterday, with major retailers about a real sea change, as it were, with regard to loss prevention officers at grocery stores and retailers about going more hands-on. There's been a corporate decision, decisions about going less hands-on. What I mean by that is, loss prevention officers, security at these stores engaging physically with with people that are engaging in theft. By the, their retraction from doing that really did cause essentially a situation in which people were aware, hey, I could grab this and there'll be no consequences. Word got out. And so now there is a real revision back to that that current policy. Because it takes us some time, our officers, to get there. Anyway, we talked about all kinds of those, those kinds of issues and making sure the business community knows we're all in to create a safe environment. All right, next slide, Bill. Okay, speaking about that, the chief and I went down to Olympia because, as many of you know, Initiative 2, 2113, which has now been passed by the legislature, we'll get to that in a minute, they had a hearing last week with regard to that and I think two other initiatives that had garnered enough signatures. And the majority, the majority in the legislators, the both of those chambers, the House and the Senate, held hearings to discuss whether they would just pass the initiatives without putting them onto the ballot. So the chief and I went down there, we submitted, there was the packed room, and a number of people wanted to testify, they only had an hour. While we didn't get to sit at the table and testify, we did submit our testimony. And we did make sure that our testimony had been delivered to our legislators prior to that. So I think it's pretty clear where the chief and I stood on this issue, and we were in constant communication with them. Well, we got amazing news yesterday, and both the House and the Senate passed Initiative 2113. And within 90 days from, yeah. It is absolutely, it's as as the mayor of the city, and I know the council feels the same way, it is a real relief that this is now, that we're no longer in an environment in which people can steal cars and commit property crime and essentially get in a car and flee without any kind of accountability. And it was really causing a cascade of other crimes. It was creating, frankly, a very unsafe environment in our community. That has now been addressed. I wrote an email this morning to our legislators, who all voted in favor of the initiative to make a law. I wanted to let them know that that we appreciated it. It was our number-one legislative priority, and we made that clear in December. And I want to tell you something. I talked with all kinds of people out in the community and and all over the region about this issue. We were told over and over and over at gatherings of cities, of gatherings of public officials, this isn't gonna happen, get used to disappointment, this will not happen. There's quote, "No appetite for this." So you can imagine my, you know, my feeling when we got the word on this, that it actually did happen. And so that's, this is gonna make a big difference. Now, I think part of the problem out in the community is that they, the message had gone out wide and far that you could steal with with individuals who make it their living to steal cars, that they could do so without without consequence. They'll get that word pretty quickly, that 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 environment will no longer exist here and around the region and around the state. So that's great news.
Mayor, can I put, just so you understand, the difference between the initiative being voted on by the legislature and the initiatives going to the voters, the difference is, the initiative that has been voted on by the legislator, the three of them, including this pursuit law, will not have to be signed by the governor, they will go into effect in 30 days. Excuse me, 90 days. But what that means is, because they voted on it, if they want to change it, they can with a simple majority. Now, if, for example, next year, if they wanted to change that law, they could with a simple majority. The initiative going to the voters, where the voters are voting on it, the other three, they would have to have a supermajority, which is harder to achieve. So there still is, there still is a window that this could come back, so you just need to be aware of that.
Well, and that's why we, thank you very much, Council President, and that's why we have to be very wise stewards of the law. The law does say that the police cannot pursue for any violation of law. Not not infractions, you don't, you don't pursue people for the, a speeding ticket or anything like that, but criminal law violations. So, you know, we have, we will have internal, and we do, we will reinstate the internal guidelines that we have. You know, we don't allow our officers, and never have, to pursue people in situations that's going to cause an incredibly reckless, dangerous situation, especially during rush hour traffic and where somebody has a real danger of being injured or hurt seriously. But where the circumstances are appropriate, we we can and will pursue. All right, and then I think that's June, what's the date, Chief? June what?
June 5th.
All right, very good. Okay, and I'm sure word will go out pretty fast, once once people start getting arrested. Okay, we had the flag raising to commemorate the second anniversary of the invasion of Ukraine, February 23rd. And it was great to see our our friends in the Ukrainian community, that was right out here in front of City Hall. We had Japanese student tour of City Hall, that was, that was me kind of showing them around and and talking about different things about our community, it was a nice student group, next. We had the comprehensive plan, open house on February 29th. And then we had the PAC-12 Women's Swimming, Men's, Men and Women's Diving Championships, February 28th through March 2nd, and March 6th through 9th, is when, and that's down there at the Aquatic Center. All right, we've got the ongoing financial literacy classes going on, March 7th, 14th, 21st, and 28th, and April 4th and 19th, Thursdays at 5:30 PM. And it's a free financial literacy workshop, the Psychology of Spending and Partnership with the Washington State Employees Credit Union. All right, next. Now, next, this coming week, the council, I think most of the council, will be headed to Washington DC. That was us last year. That was, the picture to the far right is the picture of us before a meeting with one of the members of Congress, one of our delegation, and various pictures around Washington DC. Senator Cantwell there, and a middle picture, actually, both senators are there in that briefing. And it's a very important time for us to get back there, you know, meet with our congressmen and our two senators. There will be representatives there from nearly every city in the nation. And we'll be there, I'll leave on Sunday, and it starts on the 10th and then through the 14th. And so it's something that is very important for us to engage and get ideas on governance and also, again, an opportunity to speak with our federal legislators. Okay, next. All right, and now, we've got, the the day after we get back, we have to be back for the 15th because St. Patrick's Day, we'll have the, everybody has a wee bit of the Irish in them on, as we get to St. Patty's Day. Those are some pictures from last year. And Craig Patrick is our resident Irishman.
So. They call him ambassadors.
Ambassador, thank you, thank you, all right, all right. Well, you're my ambassador, my last name's Farrell, so go, what have we got?
So my name's Craig Patrick, I'm a resident of Federal Way. We've been raising the flag since 2019. The first year that the city decided to raise flags, we figured we'd get on this while the getting's good. So we wanted to make sure we got our flag up there. So March was the first time in 2019 that we raised a flag, and we've been doing it every year since. On St. Patrick's Day, Friday, March 15th, we are going to be raising the flag here at City Hall. I brought some flowers out for you, I'll put them out here on the table, we can pick them up later if you're interested. We're gonna set up at 8 o'clock, around 8:30, people will be milling around, we're gonna have bagpipe players, we're gonna have a face painter. We're gonna raise the flag at 9:00. And then Friday evening, we're gonna do a fish fry at St. Vincent's from 5:00 to 7:00. That's on 8th Avenue here in Federal Way. Saturday, we're gonna do a litter pick, celebrate service for St. Patrick's Day, we're gonna do some service-oriented stuff. 10:00 AM, we're gonna meet at the Fred Meyer's on 21st Avenue. And we are going to do a litter pick on 21st, between 21st and 336, we really haven't determined a time or a place where we're gonna do it, we determined time, 10:00 AM at Fred Meyer's. Then Sunday, we're gonna head up to Seattle to go to the Irish Festival, Alpens, Seattle. The Seattle Heritage Club is gonna put on an Irish festival on Saturday and Sunday, we're gonna go up there on Sunday and see what that's all about. So we are gonna raise the flag on Friday, March 15th at 9:00 AM. I hope you can make it, it's always been a fun time. We're gonna have South King County Bag and Pipe Drums are gonna be there. Neil Hubbard, the bagpipe player is gonna be there, we'll have beads and gold coins for the kids, and we'll do a little Irish history information about St. Patrick's. So I hope you guys can make it, thank you, thank the city for putting us on, thank you very much, I appreciate it. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. So we may need a wee bit of help here. So we've got the Communities and Schools Breakfast at the Community Center, and that gets done at 8:30. Okay, so is it possible to start this thing at about 9:10?
Sure, yeah, 9:00, 9:15. I know you, I know you don't want it later in the day because of the drink, I know you don't want it later in the day.
That's right, that's right, exactly.
So yeah, 9:15, 9:30.
Why don't we say, you know, why don't we say this, and Bill, let's make sure we get the word out, let's say 9:15. We're making a little bit of arrangements here, you guys get to see the, see it get made, let's say 9:15 on Friday, next Friday, so we can do both, the Communities and Schools Breakfast and this. All right, thanks, Craig, appreciate it.
And you're invited to attend the Communities and Schools Breakfast, you just need tickets.
Very good. So, all right, all right, so, let's see here. All right, now, what we have is the diaper drive. Actually, Cheryl, would you like to say a few words about the diaper drive? Come on down. Diaper drive, well, actually, I'm not gonna say anymore, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor, and everyone that's here. This is the 10th Annual March of Diapers, this is the very last big drive. And when I say big, we have 78 businesses in 15 different cities collecting. The ultimate in mayors, Mayor Jim Farrell, Kent Dana Parks, we have Mayor from Milton, Shanna Stiren Sherrill, and we have David, and I forgot what his new, what his last name is, in Edgewood, which is the new mayor, and and tons of other people. So what we're gonna do on March 23rd from 10:00 to 2:00, if there's anybody that wants to volunteer to actually stand at any of the three doors, our Fred Meyer in Twin Lakes, they are the rock stars. They are so awesome. They help, not only help with the diaper drive, they've helped with food drives, they're great community partners. So we'll be handing out information about diapers, wipes, and adult disposable briefs from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. If you want to come for a while, get ahold of either me or Amy Glendon from, for the City Council's Secretary. And we will be having, we have a diaper bank now, and it's gonna kind of be more in full swing after we give all these out, all the diapers out from this drive. But we will have a year-round diaper bank, and for us to be able to afford to pay for a director, we're actually gonna be having a gala June 8th, we switched it from March because you can't really ask for diapers, expect people to dance and drink and spend money twice, so. And I can only be so many places at one time, so we appreciate all the support. I just have to tell you, if it wasn't for people in Federal Way kind of spurring me on after like the first year because it was just the Machinist Union 751 that helped me do it. And and then it's like, everybody's like, oh, like, you know, maybe, maybe we could get a couple of businesses. And, you know, a couple was 15, and now we have this many, and tons and tons of people in Federal Way that has kept this going, and I appreciate it, buddy, thanks so much.
Thank you, Cheryl, for all you've done. Now, really importantly, Craig, this isn't gonna affect the bagpipe player, right? 15 minutes, Neil's gonna be okay? All right, all right, all right, all right. All right, okay, that's gonna be the highlight of the day, but anyway. Okay. Okay, all right, let me know if it's a problem. Okay, now, the most important part of the evening is public comment. So everybody knows the rules, they're on the sheets. Green means go, yellow means skip, got 30 seconds, red means please stop, I really don't like to interrupt people. And everybody knows the rules. So just please tell us what community you live in, we don't need your address. All right, Melissa Hamilton.
Wow, I'm first. Good evening, Mayor Farrell, City Council, community. My name is Melissa Hamilton, and I'm a Federal Way resident. I've spoken many times here, and on January 2nd, I told our police officers in the room, please do not give up, to persevere, and we'll keep the pressure on till we get this law fixed. And I'm happy to say that it's a good day for Washington, and it's a good day for the community. And it's a good day for me, because I get to get up here now and talk about something different for once. Maybe you guys are looking forward to that, I know I am. So today, actually, I wanted to talk about the great work that our graffiti abatement team does. They work really hard in the city, and I know they've worked really hard these last couple weeks. Their job is really important because when we have things like vandalism, broken windows, trash on the streets, broken-down cars on our streets, it sends a message. And it sends the message that we're a city that doesn't notice and we don't care. And we know that's not true, we do notice and we do care. And so I really appreciate the work that they do. And I just wanted to recognize them, especially with the gang graffiti that they've been removing, they they go out there and remove it within like sometimes an hour. Once it's reported, so it really is a partnership, we have to report to the city so that they know when to go out there, and then they do their job, and they go out there and they get rid of it. So I guess my message to people who are thinking about coming to Federal Way to vandalize our city is, don't waste your paint in Federal Way. Thank you.
All right, thank you. You know, David, I think that she's got David Solano, our communications, that's a nice slogan, I like that. You just, just don't bother, you're just wasting your paint. We may, we may bother, we may borrow that. There's a saying among comedians that good comedians borrow, great comedians steal. So we we may steal that line. All right, Susan Strong.
Mayor Farrell, Council President Kochmar, council members. I'm Susan Strong, and I live in Federal Way. The Day Center, located on 13th Place South in Federal Way, opened December of 2016 and is operated by Catholic Community Services and other local partners. Their webpage states that their goal is to provide a social and emotional connection, to meet basic human needs of cleanliness, and to connect people to resources that will enable them to meet their full potential. Shelter and homeless services include showers, laundry, kitchenette, computers, mailbox. Housing includes shelters, transitional housing facilities, and permanent housing. Specialized services are provided for veterans, immigrants, and refugees. Mental health services are provided as well as mobile medical clinic. And if you've never seen their van, you should have a look, drives right up to the front of this place. I've never seen it, I don't know where else it goes. I've never seen it. I don't know where else it goes. Addiction recovery services, such as outpatient chemical dependency treatment and recovery centers, are offered. They are open from 8:30 AM to 4:00 PM, Monday to Friday. They're there less than 40 hours a week. I'm sure most of you work 40 hours a week. After listing the services provided by the Day Center, I have a question. Why is there such a mess in their parking lot? Why are drug addicts hanging around the parking lot and on the sidewalks 24/7? You should go there on a weekend. It's a fabulous visit. Is it possible for the Day Center to provide all of their services while keeping their parking lot and surrounding sidewalks clear of people and garbage? Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. You'll be happy to know that we'll be closing off parking at that location from 336th up to the school district property. Parking will no longer be allowed on that road, at that location. Lana Bostic. Lana Bostic and the Senior Advisory Commission. I don't know. Lana, did you want the folks to come up with you? Did you want the senior commission to come up with you? Okay. And they're going to join her up there, and she gets a total of five minutes.
Hi. Oh, my glasses.
All right. Don't start the timer yet.
I can see now. Well, hello again. Good evening, Mayor, Council President, and City Council. My name is Tammy. I am here proudly representing the Senior Advisory Commission for Federal Way. We beseech you, each and every one of you on the City Council, to impress the importance of funding for a Federal Way senior center during your upcoming visit to Washington, DC. There are approximately 76,654 just adults in Federal Way, and 14,110 of them approximately are seniors. As you move forward with budget deliberations, please consider seniors make up 14.2% of Federal Way citizens. That may not seem like a big percentage now, but take into consideration, by the year 2030, the growth of baby boomers aged 66 to 84, which is called the young old, will number 61 million people in the United States. In addition to the baby boomers, those born prior to 1946, called the oldest old, will number 9 million people in 2030. Contemplate this. If you were alone in the world, your spouse of 40 or 50 years or more maybe, has passed away. Most of your friends moved or don't get around well. The kids and grandkids, they're busy. You feel irrelevant. You don't have anything interesting to talk about, so you don't talk. You have no idea how to reach out or where to reach out to, so you sit in your home. You get depressed. You isolate yourself. Maybe watch TV, read the newspaper, and the highlight of your week is going to a doctor appointment or shopping. There aren't really any gathering places for us to go to, not that with older people, that we feel safe in some of the areas. How would you feel? And what would you do? Well, in my profession, I know. I know what they do. The depression and loneliness wins. They take medicine to help, but they get sicker, and many times, just wait for the end. According to the Center for Disease Control, Centers for Disease Control, seniors are the second most likely group to die from suicide, primarily due to the lack of socialization options. Is this the legacy we want to leave to our forebearers? What we want is to give back to the citizens who helped build the city, who paid their taxes, who volunteered, and who worked. A few facts about the importance of a senior center from the National Council on Aging. You see senior centers are places where boomers thrive. They offer educational opportunities, health, fitness, and wellness programs, employment assistance, social and recreational activities, volunteer and civic engagement opportunities, social opportunities so they can engage in conversation with their peer group, and so they connect on their own level. Studies have shown that communities that invest in their seniors have a better quality of life and opportunities for the boomers. According to the Older Americans Act, senior centers have become one of the most widely-used services among America's older adults. Senior centers serve as a gateway to the nation's aging network, connecting millions of older adults to vital community services. Senior centers are working in partnership with other communities, agencies, and organizations, and businesses to provide access to an array of opportunities for older adults to stay safe and healthy. Despite the budget challenges, we believe it is possible for the city to enact a budget that reflects the values that have become resoundingly clear for Federal Way seniors. This means funding for a senior center, truly investing in the community. Dylan Thomas wrote, "Do not go gentle into that good night. Old age should burn and rave at close of day. Rage, rage, rage against the dying of the light." Unfortunately, people think aging is that good night. It is not, and we will not go, nor will this new generation of active, young and old, young rather, old and oldest old. If a feasibility study is necessary for a brand-new building or location, let's look at a long-term lease of one of the many vacant buildings in Federal Way. Additionally, if a feasibility study is required, we, the Senior Advisory Commission, would like to be included to give input and receive updates and reports. Can I finish my sentence?
Yeah.
Okay. Again, we beseech you, if necessary, on bended knee, to please ask for the funding from Washington, DC on your trip for the development of a vital Federal Way senior center. In closing, we thank you for your time and ask you to think with your heart as well as your head. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good job, Tammy.
And great job, and thank you for your service, our senior commission. We will certainly work on this. Thank you very much. Keri Asselin, and then Barbara Walsh. Barbara Marsh.
Is this okay, because I'm short?
Yeah.
All right. Hi, my name is Keri Asselin, and I'm the president of the Marine Hills Garden Club. I actually live in Buckley, Washington. That's how great the Marine Hills Garden Club is. I drive once a month to be there. So, I'm here for the purpose of just awareness and expanding our membership. We're nonprofit. We meet the third Tuesday of every month between September and May at 5:30 at the Foundation House by Kaiser Permanente. Except December and January, where we have our meetings on Zoom, because some of our members are a little bit older than me. And we have, our members are varied in ages, and they're from master gardeners to people who are just interested in learning about plants. We have a meeting with a program and/or sometimes creating yard decoration, and in the summer, we usually do tours. We're part of the Chinook District, which includes Enamclaw and Des Moines. And we actually do functions, like every other month, we have a lunch, and you can bring plant samples, and there's places where you can be in a contest, like for flower arranging. But you don't have to. It's just for fun, if you're interested. But our main business is community service. We were the group that acquired and maintained the Blue Star marker at Celebration Park. We provide flowers for the Foundation House and Life Care Center at Christmas, for cheering and Valentine's Day, and we provide some gifts for the Life Center for the residents who don't have family come visit them. We donate to a college scholarship through the Chinook District, and we donate and/or create programs. We work with many of the schools from the Federal Way School District, including Olympic View, where we donated books at Christmas this year. So, it was nice to hear that earlier. I was paying attention. And we're going to have a booth at the STEM Night at the Federal Way High School. And if you're interested, I will do better next time for something for email or telephone number. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. All right. Barbara. We've got three left. Barbara Marsh, Ken Blevins, and Jeffrey Tancredi. So, Barbara Marsh.
Hi. Good evening, City Council members. My name's Barbara Marsh. I am a longtime city resident. I am here regarding Code 22-1177, which is about being able to park an RV on your property. I'm told that the code says it can't be over 22 feet long or 9 feet high. We had a 26-foot trailer parked in a parking pad off the street but in the front of our house for 15 years. Never heard anything. My husband got ill. He can't drive. We sold it. Last summer, we decided to, hey, let's get an RV. We bought a motor home for $30,000. We traded in my husband's truck because he couldn't drive. And a couple of months ago, we get a letter stating that we can't park it there anymore, that the rule says it has to be less than 22 feet long and 9 feet high. And I called and talked to the officer, and she said, yeah, somebody drove around. 20 people in my neighborhood got the same letter. Now, these aren't $100,000 motor homes. These are regular people in a modest neighborhood that want to go camping. And we moved our motor home today. It's going to cost us $200 a month to store. So, how long do you think we're going to keep a $30,000 motor home, 2005? So, what I don't understand is, it was off the street. It wasn't parked in the street, okay? It's ugly. I understand that. But we have a big side yard. Why can't we park it in our backyard, behind a fence? You know, is the city, if you make all these people get rid of their RVs, do you not get any funding from the car tabs? There's not enough places to park these, even if you have $200 a month. People camp here. What are we supposed to do? I don't understand. So, I'm hoping that maybe we can have some changes in the rules. I mean, you have a rule that is a rule. We didn't know it was a rule. We parked our thing for 15 years. It's only a rule if someone complains. How is that fair? So, either you need to tell people it's a rule so that they don't go out and buy a motor home, or you have adjustments to the rule. Thank you.
Thank you. Keith, who's head of community development, will you please talk with Ms. Marsh?
Absolutely.
And make sure we've got her, let's make sure we've got up-to-date contact information. And let's talk about that particular, that batch of enforcements tomorrow.
Okay.
Craig, Mayor?
Yes.
Mayor, if I could maybe speak up on that. In land use, we recently just, as you know, had a motor home discussion about parking on the street.
Yeah.
And very shortly, this same topic will be coming to land use. We've already asked Keith to tee it up. And we're going to look at the rules of motor homes in the neighborhoods. So, it will be coming up here probably in the next 60 days or so, I believe.
Okay.
So, I just want to make sure that you're aware of that.
And one of the things that we looked at is that 22-foot length. And so, I mean, we want to, you know, as a council, we want to make sure that things are fair and fair.
Ms. Marsh, are you following? Are you following the discussion? Actually, let's, this is, these comments are for you.
Yes.
Would you actually, let's hit the replay button. Councilmember Dobie, can you say that again?
Yes. Thank you for coming forward. You may have seen recently, we just made a ruling or made some new amendments to our ordinance for parking motor homes on the commercial streets. And part of that, it's a two-step process. The next part of our discussion, in the next, Keith, maybe 60, 90 days, is to discuss how we're going to have motor homes parked in the neighborhoods. So, your comments are on the right time where we're coming up to have that discussion. No, I'm not sitting here saying it's going to change, because I don't know where it's going to land, but that is on our work plan for the next couple of months in land use.
Well, I appreciate that you're discussing it. Thank you.
And one of the items that was, that we considered discussing is the 22-foot length. Once again, how that'll all end up, you know, we don't know. But we're very cognizant of the challenge that you're facing.
Can I add one comment? We were at Camping World today to have it looked at. We looked at their trailers. They had two that are 22 feet tall. They're all taller than 9 feet. The motor homes don't come that big. So, you know, if you don't make it bigger, nobody can have them. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. And we do have one council member who's going to make, Ms. Marsh, one more comment.
I'm curious to know about the location, the 20. I'd like to get those names. And is it possible to stay the orders until we get this determined?
I'm going to look at that. One of the things that we're going to do is, Keith, I'm going to ask you to pull those, figure out what area, neighborhood. You know, we are going to a more, a more, we used to have a reactive code enforcement, Ms. Marsh, in which neighbor would have to complain against neighbor. We've gone to a much more proactive code enforcement, because there are some locations in town that are really awful, that really degrade a neighborhood, where you've got garbage and washers and dryers in the front yard, and, you know, just really things that we just cannot allow. But for these, what we're going to do is, we're going to pull these, take a look at them, and we'll be in touch with you, okay?
Thank you. I appreciate it.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. Thank you. Great recommendation. Okay. All right. Now, Mr. Blevins, Ken, thank you very much for your patience. You're on.
Thanks, Council, for answering that question. That's very timely. That's pretty amazing. Thanks, Mayor, for allowing that discussion to be had. My name's Ken Blevins. I'm a citizen of Federal Way. It's really funny. It's actually really timing. I was checking out some chicken wings over at an establishment over here before this, because I'm on this kick lately. I'm on a diet, but kind of chicken wings are fitting in there. So, anyways, these people sitting right next to me are talking.
I'd like to know the name of that diet, but...
Yeah. So, looking pretty good, right? It's not bad. Not bad. So, there's more to it. But anyways, these people sitting next to me were dealing with the same thing. They're just wondering why they're having to, their vehicle's in a cul-de-sac away from everybody else. Their vehicle's parked in their property 100%. Why does it matter to the city that honestly, there's a lot of dirty things out there, a lot of, you know, like you said, just kind of disheveled mess right there. Maybe we can help citizens get rid of that stuff. Maybe they're putting it out there because they just really can't afford to get rid of it. Maybe a little more helpful enforcement. But to put $200 a month on somebody is ridiculous. I'm paying for storage for my business, and they went from $300 three months later to $400 after I moved everything in there last year. I went to the new place, $300. Now, they're up to $330. I mean, it's a racket. They're taking advantage of people, and I really don't like it. I don't get to charge my customers more money because they keep doing this stuff. And I own a business that actually pays for it. These people are just citizens trying to, you know, live their lives and trying to do things that are active and fun and that kind of thing, because they only have, we only have so much time on this earth, right? So, let's just encourage that, just being active and not, you know, putting pressure on people that are just trying to make it because of all the taxes and other things that are going up. Maybe we can be the city that actually looks out for each other. So, that's not really what I wanted to talk about, though. What I wanted...
Do I need to restart the clock?
No, no, no. I got one minute. So, I didn't really understand about the sidewalk thing, who that actually really affected. Kind of understood a little bit more. If it's your stuff is causing a problem with the sidewalk, then you got to fix it, right? So, the 150 offers, I've always wondering if we don't have 150 officers, and we've always been budgeted that for quite a long time, where's that money been going? Hopefully, I have a bunch of money sitting there. Maybe we can just spend it on lots more officers. And then also, the Day Center. We really need to keep pushing on that. I saw that just got cleaned out. But I think it really took a couple of businesses to complain. complain about it. They're right across the street to actually do that. I know us, we've been talking about it the whole time. It's a real mess. Now, these guys, if you look across the street on 336, there's like 15 carts full of junk. We can go get those carts, you know? We have an ordinance. I don't know why, once we get these things removed, the cops can show up, get those carts, and we can help these people out at the same time. Just an idea. Thanks.
Look, Ken, let me say, if you see carts on the street, shoot us, shoot us an email. We'll go get them. And so if we see them, we'll take care of them. So thank you. With regard to the 150 officers, you know, it was really, it's been very difficult. We've been budgeted since the last, I think it's been the past couple of years, we got to the 150. Getting that, you know, because of retirements, and there's been a lot of law enforcement officers that have retired, and then just getting to that level. Like I said, we've got 16 in the academy. But what we need to do is make sure that we get these positions filled, and then the four more. So it's a work in progress. So thank you. Okay, yes.
Something Ken said, you have waste management, garbage service. Once a year, you can have large items picked up, no additional cost. You need to see what their limitations are, but you need to make the phone call. They'll arrange for a special vehicle to come out, and you have to get it to your curb that aren't going to come in your house and get your washing machine or whatever. But that's a service that we have here in Federal Way, so it's once a year. I used it for the first time last year, and I'm going to make sure I use it again this year and every year. It's a great service we provide.
Can we add that to the sidewalk letter? Oh.
The sidewalk letter, the second sidewalk letter has, it should be in the mail and
should be hitting. So that one's in the mail. Actually, are there, did you say there's carts out there right now on 336?
Yeah. Because they moved from there to somewhere else, and then they're popped out, and they're actually, where the bus stop is, they're squatting.
All right.
They're probably going to go back to the day center. You know, it's going to be a game they're playing.
All right. So EJ and Chief, let's talk about that tomorrow. Let's make sure, maybe, EJ, you can have your folks go over there and take an assessment of what's going on on the sidewalks on the right of way.
Sure.
I mean, you drive by, we all drive by all the way.
Yeah, and I'll look at it on the way home.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
So for those people who were in at the special meeting, we are hiring four more officers. So we'll go from 150 to 154.
If it's passed in the budget.
Right, what's that?
If it's passed in the budget.
Yeah, correct. Yeah, we have to go through that process. Okay, unless we, unless we separate that out, we're, sorry, we're, the proposal will be to add four officers. Also, Mr. Blevins asked about, you know, unspent money for officers when we're in, when we're in that process. If we can, you know, there, while those, like, we have five vacant positions right now, some of those in the academy, savings we use for, you know, various general fund needs. So, you know, depending on what's going on. But that, we're in, we're in good shape budget-wise, so...
Could you do that? Isn't that money really only supposed to have gone to cops in terms of overtime?
Well, actually, Steve Grum, or actually, Chase.
Yeah, we have spent some of that savings on special emphasis overtime for some of the police officer activity.
Yeah. Ken, if you're, if you're interested about the details about that, shoot us an email. We'll get you, we'll have Chase Donnelly, our deputy director of finance, or anybody that's interested, will get you some more information on that. But we do a lot of SOU, Special Operations Unit, emphasis patrols throughout the city. Okay. All right, Jeffrey Tancredi, and then Anna Patrick.
Good evening, Mayor, Council President, Coach Mar, and council members. Good evening. On the subject, oh, Jeff Tancredi, Federal Way resident since 1997. Yeah, it's been a long time. So I want to say thanks to the mayor and the council for working on the RV ordinance. I know that, you know, you're working on it, and I guess one of the things I'm thinking of is, as you get the streets taken care of, I notice when I drive around, you know, the RVs, and some of these, I'm talking about ones that are just really bad shape, where vehicles, old jalopies drive up, and there looks, it appears to be some sort of nefarious activity, and then they leave. So with this new ordinance that you're working on, I'm concerned about the places that they'll congregate to, like Home &amp; Home Parking Lot, The Parking Ride on 348th and 9th Avenue. So Safeway Parking Lot. So that's the place they'll probably go, because they know that you have to contact the owner of the property, and that's going to take some time for them to go from there. And then, just like, unfortunately, the homeless drug addicts, you know, they go from place to place. So as, you know, it sounds great, and I appreciate the work for, on the ordinance, but I see them congregating in the parking lots of the grocery stores, and the parking lots of The Park &amp; Ride, and the, you know, the vacant Home &amp; Home Parking Lot. So is there any, you know, I was just thinking, is there a way to have some kind of a memorandum of understanding with the owners of the property that, because it's going to be a constant thing? And if you're, you're going to be calling them 395 times a year, whereas you can just make one phone call and say, hey, can we get an understanding in a memorandum and say, hey, these folks are going to be coming here all the time, can you give us the authority to, you know, move them off instead of having to wait? Because they'll just go from place to place. I've watched it for many months now. So that's just a concern. And they have all of their belongings, you know, I guess they can't afford to go to an RV park like every other normal person does. They go to an RV park. They want to congregate in our city, and it makes our city look bad. That's all. So anyway, thanks for your time.
Thanks, Jeffrey. Anna Patrick.
Evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Council. I would like to address the RVs. I'm going to share a different perspective, well, kind of similar to Mr. Tancredi's here. And so our experience with RVs in our neighborhood is that of the kind of drug addict activity. And so we had a drug house in our neighborhood. We had an RV come through and deal drugs at the drug house, and would hang around at the drug house. And it was a pretty rundown-looking RV, but that alone, we can't certainly, you know, discriminate against the look of the RV per se, but the activity. And we also had another neighborhood, or another house in our neighborhood that had an RV parked in front of it. It was somebody's child, adult child, who had fallen into drug addiction and had all of their friends living in the RV with them. They were staying in the RV in front of the house and had all of the drug activity. You'd see them kind of at the local Safeway with the stack of bikes on the back and, you know, the people shifting around, you know, taking turns going into the store and, and, you know, didn't look like they were up to anything good when they were smoking fentanyl around the corner, or whatever it was, shooting up at the time when that was going on. So, you know, there's activity around it that you can kind of pinpoint that shouldn't be allowed. And so I think we need to figure out as a city how to differentiate between the RVs that are truly the vacation RVs that people want to keep at their homes, and maybe they should keep it behind a fence that's hidden so everybody else doesn't have to look at it. Off the street, because parking is getting more limited, and limiting size so the neighbors don't have to stare at it out of their home. And maybe licensing the RVs, requiring, having certain requirements, keeping the license plate up to date, for example, that's a pretty good clue. It'd be great if we could kind of put a limit on, you know, this would be a legislative thing, where we put a limit on the resale of these old rundown RVs that really shouldn't even be on the road. It's almost, some people that are compassionate are actually giving them out and selling them at cheap price, and really shouldn't have the feces going around our neighbor communities on the ground. They're supposed to be hooked up properly if they're being lived in. So there's a lot of ways that we can skin this cat. So hopefully, we can be creative and come up with something that works for everybody, because we cannot have these drug dens rolling around our cities, parking around in our neighborhoods, especially neighborhoods that are right adjacent to the downtown core. That's going to be the path of least resistance. Please be mindful of that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, all right, that's the last pink sheet that I have. Great, thank you very much for your public comment. It's, you know, we work for you, and it's great to hear this level of engagement. Thank you. Okay, now, moving on to presentations. First, we have Item A, Proclamation, Federal Way Lions Club's 70th Anniversary. Councilmember Honda.
Thank you. I'd like to invite all of the Lions Club members to come to the podium.
Where are they?
Well, I don't know. What I love about their green jackets is that you know where they are.
Exactly.
So if anyone has ever attended the car show that's generally in the Federal Way Commons Parking Lot in August, this is a group of people that put that on, and they raise money for their scholarships. And they've given out thousands and thousands of dollars of scholarships over the years. So that is one of the great community events in the summertime here in Federal Way. All right, so I'm going to read the proclamation, and then I'll come down and hand it to you. "Federal Way Lions 70th Anniversary. Whereas the Federal Way Lions Club began in 1954 to empower volunteers to serve their communities, meet humanitarian needs, encourage peace, and promote international understanding through their service. And whereas the Federal Way Lions promote community through their partnerships with the Federal Way School District, the farmer's market, the senior center, Salvation Army, and multi-service center, and the South King Fire and Rescue. And whereas on March 23rd, 2024, the Federal Way Lions will be hosting a celebration for their 70th anniversary of inception. And whereas being a member of the Lions Club gives others the opportunity to lead through service and create a more welcoming and community-oriented place to live. And now therefore, we the undersigned mayor and city council members of the city of Federal Way do hereby proclaim March 23rd, 2024 to be the Federal Way Lions Club's 70th anniversary, and we call upon the citizens of Federal Way to recognize that wherever there is a need, there is a lion. Signed this 5th day of March."
I'm Bob Derrigan.
Bob, we're going to take a picture. The mirror is going to take a picture of you guys.
Okay.
So let's show you some curly whites.
Thank you. Just a quick moment here. Your service clubs are the heart of this community. And there's several of them. I can name them off, and with privilege, Ser Optimus, which is a group of wonderful The Kiwanis, that do some wonderful things as well. And the Rotary. And there's a women's group here that's been here for years. A lot of you don't know about that. But what I want to suggest to each one of you is search your heart and choose some group to get behind to serve your community. And shop around. Find the ones with the best smile. Find the ones that just simply have fun serving their community. And I know where you're going to go. We are privileged. We are truly privileged to be able to serve our people here, of all ages, of all needs. Thank you.
President?
We would like to thank you all for the participation and the support that we've received through the years and the very many different kinds of projects we've worked on. And, and just by the way, on May 4th, we're going to have a fundraiser for our music festival. And tonight, I hadn't shared this, there's a 12-year-old girl who's agreed to play accordion for that at Flapjacks at Jimmy Max. The council members have their flyers. And June 22nd, we'll be at Steel Lake Park. We're having a music festival, and our car show is going to be...
In August.
In August, thank you.
Council President, did you want to add something?
I was just going to say thank you, but when you all sit down, please, will the women please stay standing right where you are? We don't need you men, we want the women.
For the next, all right. All right, thank you so much. Let's give them a big round of applause. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, the next item is the...
Well, women, women, stay there. Women, stay. Now, can I have all the women in the audience join our ladies there? All the women in the audience, please join them. And can I have Becca Martin, from the CEO from the chamber, go to the podium, along with Amanda Miller from the South King Tool Library, and Laura Belvin, who's the president of the Lake Haven Board of Commissioners? Sorry. Okay. And now, can I have our council members, Lydia Sepadossen and Susan Honda, would you please join them, our ladies in leadership? Thank you. So what you all represent, and what the mayor was getting ready to say, this is the proclamation for Women's History Month.
The men have a month, too, and you guys never celebrate it.
Okay, thank you.
We looked it up last time.
Are they going to get them in? Because there's room here. Kealan, you guys come up here.
Thank you. Okay. Gee, Joff, I thought you were going to join us. Thank you very much. So whereas this month of March is a time to recognize the significant contributions that women of all races, ethnicities, and backgrounds have made to the world in countless recorded and unrecorded ways. And whereas the theme for Women's History Month in 2024 is Women Who Advocate for Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion, highlighting women from the past and present who understand that for a positive future, we need to eliminate bias and discrimination entirely from our lives and institutions. And whereas we celebrate Women's History Month and the Advancement of Gender Equality and Equality. And whereas honoring Women's History Month also incorporates the celebration of International Women's Day and Women in Public Office Day. And whereas International Women's Day is celebrated on Friday, March 8th, to recognize the social, economic, cultural, and political achievements of women throughout the world. And whereas Women in Public Office Day is celebrated on Tuesday, March 19th, highlighting the fundamental necessity of including women in all aspects of public service, providing inspiration to young women in our communities to become leaders. And now therefore, we the undersigned mayor and city council members of the city of Federal Way do hereby proclaim March 24th to be Women's History Month, and call upon the people of Federal Way to unite as we support the success of women in our past, present, and future. Signed this 5th day of March. And so thank you. I want to tell you, if you ever want to get anything done, ask one of these women. Okay? They're very busy women. And I also want to say that the city was incorporated because of women.
Yes, it was.
So you need to understand that you are the backbone of our community. Thank you very much.
And I would like to ask of the backbone of the city council, Amy Glendon, to join them for the picture up there.
Well, I think I'm going to start and say that we are clearly aware that we are the backbone of this community. And happy to be so. It is quite an honor to be standing up here among the powerful women that are all around me at the moment. And to share a little stat, representing business, as I am here for the CEO as the Greater Federal Way Chamber of Commerce. Do you know that one-third of all the businesses around the globe in the world are owned by women? Did you know that? I didn't know that. Also, that if you have a gender-diverse leadership team, you are likely to have 25% higher profits than counterparts that are run just by men. Which means we need to work together. Anyway, thank you for including us in this. Thank you for the real privilege and the professional honor I have every day of working with women leaders through the Greater Federal Way Chamber of Commerce. And thank you for what you all do and to make our jobs successful. I'm going to throw it to you, Amanda. Hometown hero. Yes. No, thank you. But I'll take whatever you want to give me. But no, thank you. I was truly humbled to be named hometown hero this past week. And I appreciate being part of this city. I am Amanda Miller. I am the Executive Director of the South King Tool Libraries and a leader in environmental justice. I am proud to say that. I'm also a Seroptimus, president of the Seroptimus International of Federal Way. Many of the members that we have here, and their many good works. I'm also a lot of other things. You can read Killen's article to get the full scoop if you want to. And more. But I just want to say thank you. I had intended to actually come to a council meeting to thank you for our contract. Actually, we work with the city all the time at the Tool Library. We had 540 people drive through the last recycling event, the first one of the year. But it was a pretty momentous occasion to just have that many people, tons, literally tons, recycled. And I'm sitting down texting with our business manager, thinking about all of the things that we're talking about today, even sidewalks. You know we have pressure washers? You guys know we have hammer drills if you need to improve your sidewalk. We have pole chainsaws to take down tree limbs. I could do a whole commercial just for the Tool Library. And then we have recycling events. We partner with the city. I invite you all. March 30th is our first repair cafe of the year. If you've never been, it's a ton of fun and it's an amazing resource because you come and get things fixed for free. We also partner for swaps. We partner for workshops. And we're replicating this in Auburn as well, so I'm really proud that we've been able to do that. I don't want to keep talking, but I have a lot more to say. I am also very happy to read this proclamation because we still have a lot of work to do. Becca, did you know that there are four million more women on the planet than there are men?
I celebrate it every day.
Those girls, including my daughter, who didn't come, so I get to talk about her. So they have a lot to look forward to. And we need to keep opening up these opportunities. We need to keep doing the hard work and showing up for everybody that isn't here, that isn't represented in this group of powerful women. And everyone that is on the dais here, the podium. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, all the council members, for what you do every day. And all of these leaders. One more. These guys, right here. Just one more round of applause. All of you ladies. Thank you. Okay, I will stop. Thank you.
Now, Laura is our president of our Lake Haven... By the way, this is the only second woman who's ever been on the board for Lake Haven.
Well, it's a privilege and to serve the community for you on a utility board. And just want to thank all you women for serving our community and encourage you to run for office. And want to thank those of you who are serving us with your talents and your perspective is really important. Thank you.
Laura's an engineer, by the way. So, thank you. Thank you very much, ladies. You represent the other ladies in our community that have worked so hard to build our community and are continuing to do so and so. Thank you very much. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, now we're on to item six, council committee and regional committee reports. First, Parks, Recreation, Human Services, and Public Safety Committee. Councilmember Walsh.
All right, very short report. Earlier, we had the senior commission up here. The majority of the commissions in the city fall under the Parks, Recreation, Human Services, and Public Safety Committee. And as the chair of that committee, I've been trying to attend periodically the commission meetings. I had the privilege of attending the senior commission meeting, part of it, a few weeks ago. And also the Arts Commission. And I'm going to be, or Diversity Commission, rather, and going to be trying to attend them more regularly. Other than that, we will not be having a Parks Committee meeting in March because we are going to be back in DC next week. But our next meeting will be April 9th. That is my report.
All right, thank you. Land Use and Transportation, L U T C, Councilmember Dovi.
Yes, we had our land use meeting last night. And one of the big discussion points is the upcoming vote in April about the purchase and sale, I would call it, of the TC3, the target property, to our developers. It came out of committee to come before the council. Because of the time it takes to broadcast that, it will be coming up in our first April council meeting. We did also have our Public Works Department worked on a strategic plan. We now have a document I'm showing here that's very well done, and you can find it on the webpage, of what our Public Works Department does, all the way from the environmental things, from shoreline things, to fixing streets, to helping manage garbage. And it's a well-thought-out plan, and this is our five-year plan that came out of Public Works. Our next meeting will be the first Monday in April. And as we talked earlier in public comment, you heard people talk about motorhomes, or at least one individual. And we made the first step of banning motorhomes on commercial streets or making it so our police officers and our code enforcement people can be more proactive. The next step will be to look at the neighborhoods and what that looks like, where you can park them, how you can park them, how long they are, how high they are. So that will be coming up shortly in land use for the next few, 60 days or so.
All right, Finance, Economic Development, and Regional Affairs Committee, Fedrec, Councilmember Tran.
Thank you, Mayor. The Fedrec's committee met on February 27th, exactly one week ago. All seven council members were present at that meeting and heard all presentation, so thank you for that. Five items on tonight's consent agenda. Item B through F were approved and forwarded by the committee for approval. And one item on tonight's business agenda was discussed and forwarded by the committee for further discussion, the Security Services Contract Amendment. Our next meeting going to be on March 26th at 5:00 PM in this room. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you very much. All right, then Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, LTAC, Councilmember Sepadossen.
Thank you, Mayor. Our meeting for March has been canceled. And Economic Development is working on a tourism master plan. And we'll be working with LTAC on funding. And on March 27th, we're hosting the Highland Forum. And the topic is on tourism, so Tonya and myself will be presenting on that. And the mayor is also going to welcome the Highland Forum, and it's going to be hosted here in Federal Way. With that, I end my report.
All right, great. Thank you very much. Regional committees report. Councilmember Honda.
Thank you. I've attended several meetings the last couple of weeks. And one of them was AWC's Education and Training Committee. The AWC Annual Conference is in Vancouver. It starts on Tuesday, June 18th. They will be holding a June 19th event, which they're working on now. So we didn't want people to miss that in their cities so that we can do that all as state council members and mayors. AWC also has on April 11th, a recap on the legislative session. It's on Zoom. It is, registration is required, and that's open now if you'd like to register for that. The senior commission had their first annual retreat last week. And we worked on goals and issues. And of course, we talked about the desire to have a standalone senior center here in the City of Federal Way. SCA had a lunch and learn on the closure of the youth detention center. And I think three of us were online for that. But the rest of the council, if you're interested in what was said, they did send us out information, and I can forward it to you. There was a lot of information that went back and forth. And as I said, it's not a done deal yet. So if you're interested in the information, let me know and I'll give it to you. And this morning, there is a public health briefing. SCA does that once a month with Dr. Khan from Public Health. I'm not, don't know if you're aware, but public health is having, well, King County government is having some financial issues, and they're affecting the public health department. But one of the concerns that has been raised over the last several months is the ability to keep the public health buildings open. And if you remember when our mayor first took office, King County attempted to close both the public health building in Federal Way and the one in Auburn. And we, as a city, had to come up with money to keep our public health building open. So maybe when you're talking with the King County executive, you can encourage him to keep these buildings open. It's healthcare for those who need it. And I realize that there is a budget crisis in King County. And, but this is not something that can be closed.
Agreed.
Especially in South King County. And I want to be on top of it instead of when the budget is, I believe he said it's going to be in May or June when it will be presented, but we don't want to be on that cut list.
Agreed.
So maybe if you can talk to Dow.
Absolutely. Brian, let's talk about that tomorrow. Let's reach out to Dow's chief, Shannon, the executive's chief. We need to, and Bill, let's work on this as well. We need to make sure that 10 years ago, they were serving 14,000 people in our community.
No, it's more.
And so now it's a lot more. And we were there for the expansion of that facility shortly thereafter. We came up, the council unanimously voted at that time to fund, I believe it was $230,000, to keep that facility open. And we need to make sure that that access to healthcare is available.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. All right, now, Council President.
Thank you. And Tammy just left, but maybe she can still hear me. I've got her information on senior centers. I'll put it in my packet to go to Washington DC. Please keep us in your thoughts and prayers next week as we travel to DC. The majority of us to try and lobby on your behalf. I'm a little nervous because several of us are on the same plane. I'm a risk manager. I'm nervous about that one. But at any rate, we'll be working as hard as we can for you next week. And I'm going to say thank you to some citizens who are still in the audience, amongst others, who sent me a very thoughtful thank you card with a little gift. And it was very, very thoughtful. Thank you very much for thinking of me. I appreciate that. Thank you. It's nice to get a thank you instead of all the complaints. So thank you very much.
Well, I have to tell you, Council President, it's because of you that we have a federal lobbyist. I mean, the council approved it, but you were, this is something that you, because of your experience, were talking about quite a bit. So thank you so much for your leadership on that. Okay, so in follow-up, everybody, I want to let you know, we're going to follow up on naming rights, senior center, public health. There's a lot to follow up on. There's a lot going on in this meeting. So I promise responses on each one of those. Okay, now, let's move on to, I believe we are on to consent agenda. These items have gone through committee and can be passed all at once, but I'll read them and ask if a council member wants an item pulled for separate consideration. Item A, minutes for the February 20th, '24 regular and special meetings. B, monthly financial report December 2023. C, AP vouchers 11824 through 21624, and payroll vouchers 1124 through 13124. Item D, security solutions Northwest Incorporated, project completion and retainage release. There's an appearance, AG 21, this is an AG opinion, I would imagine, AG 21-177. Item E, recreation and conservation office grant acceptance in agreement, Sahali Sports Court resurfacing. That's great news. And item F, King County Directors Association Agreement, Sahali Sports Courts Resurfacing Project. Council, are there any items you would want pulled for separate consideration? All right, Council President.
Thank you, Mayor. I move approval of the consent agenda items A through F.
Second.
There's been a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, items A through F pass unanimously. We are on to item B, item, excuse me, item eight. And item A under eight is Security Services Contract Amendment Number One for City Parks and Facilities On Call Emergency or Temporary Security. John Hutner is our Parks Director. He'll do the presentation. John, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Council President, City Council. This was brought before committee last week and was moved from proposed consent agenda. Councilmember Dovi, I thought it would be a good idea to talk a little bit more at length. So as you're aware, back in late 2023, we sought overnight security at your request after the very high-profile break-in over at the Yard. Since then, we've had a couple of unfortunate incidents, including the one at Dumas Bay, that you're all aware of. So we have asked to add some compensation to the Pierce County Security Contract that we have for overnight security as needed and be able to be more proactive and able to protect different properties on different times differently than we have in the past. So with that, the council, the policy question in front of you is should the city council approve the amendment to the city's agreement with Pierce County Security Incorporated for an additional $250,000 in compensation for the additional temporary services? The two options are to approve the proposed amendment to the current security services agreement or do not approve and provide staff direction. With that, I just want to let you know that we don't necessarily intend to spend all the $250,000. This allows us to have people on call and ready to respond as we need them. We've been very happy with Pierce County Security. They've done a great job. They've been working with us for many, many years, providing security at things like red, white, and blues, and all kinds of different things. And this gives us more opportunities, and we've added several different locations, including the Steel Lake Maintenance Yard, Dumas Bay Center, the PAC, and the Federal Way Community Center. In addition to anything else, we'd really like them to be able to protect as needed. So with that, I think the council wanted some discussion, so happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, and council, I do want to let you know that I directed, John, to make sure, John Hutten here, that for any performance that is now done at Dumas Bay, because 20 windows or 20 cars were impacted with shattered windows, we ended up on regional news about this. We had in one night 69 cars throughout the city that were hit. There was 21 or 22 at Dumas Bay. And you can imagine, all those people came out, and people that are actors and people that were watching, came out in all those, many of those cars. Obviously, 22 of them had damaged windows, shattered windows. Then we had at the mall, I think there were 16 there. There was 10 at the Aquatic Center. That was just a rampage. So we've got some lights here, so...
Nine at my church.
Oh, that's awful. It is really awful. So we obviously have, let's go through, let's do this order. Councilmember Walsh, Councilmember Dovi, Councilmember McDaniel. And actually, you know what? I think I saw McDaniel's, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see that. So I think Councilmember McDaniel's light went on first. And then we'll do Councilmember Walsh and Dovi, and then Councilmember Honda. So Councilmember McDaniel?
Thank you. Some of the questions I have are for clarity. When this first came up, I believe it was when we had the break-in at the facility over there. And at that point, we had a discussion on pulling money away in the opera to fund some security and also harden the location. One of my questions is, what was the amount that was put against security? Was it the $250,000? Was it the 250? Was that the amount that, that was put aside for that?
No, this is an addition. We had a contract with money in it. I don't have the exact dollar amount now, but we knew we were going to be burning through that because we're protecting that yard seven days a week, including 24 hours a day on Saturday and Sunday, and then less during the week because we have staff there in the daytime. But this is an addition, this will help cover that, in addition to the new needs, such as the mayor just mentioned at Dumas Bay.
Got you. Brian, you have the, I'm sorry, I want to make sure you get a full answer to your question. John, let's, Brian, do you remember the exact number, or Chase? Does anybody have it? Where we, for the, for the yard?
The yard, I believe, we're at about $111,000 at the end of this month, since we started over there. So that's been about four months.
And that included not only the security, but the new fencing, the, doing the electrical, making it electrified, and some, some barb? All right, so please continue.
Yeah, that was, that was one part of the question was, is, it was, are these, are those funds being used for this, or do we had to add to the funds in order to?
This is just security guards. This is Pierce County security guards.
Yeah, but in that, in that conversation we had, we had put aside a certain amount of money for securities, and that's why I was trying to figure out if this money is separate from that, or if this is that money we had talked about.
This is separate from that, I believe. This is just adding compensation to Pierce County Security that provides us security guards.
I think a better answer is, this is an addition to what we've had to spend because our legislature until recently had a bad law on the books.
So this is, that's what I'm, I'm trying to figure out.
Yeah, this is, this is an addition to we've already voted on to spend in the, in the past.
Correct, this is just adding compensation to a current contract.
360,000 is what we're looking at then for security. Okay, that's what I want to check on. Last train of thought, come back to me on that one.
I will. I'll come back to you before we get done. Councilmember Walsh?
Yeah, and this question isn't so much for John, it's for the chief. So all of a sudden, he looks up to pay attention now, so. What is the latest, any progress on apprehending the young hooligans, or whatever you want to call them, that did all those, those, damaged all the vehicles?
Yes, we have identified two individuals. We're still actively looking for them. They're juveniles, the two identified, one 17, one 14, but they're more transient, they don't have a permanent address right now, so we're looking for them. So we have developed probable cause, a strong probable cause for one of them, and pretty close probable cause on the other. We're continuing our investigation.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Dovi?
Yeah, I think, one of the reasons this is here for discussion is, in my opinion, is not because of the money. And I think our legislature and their vote on the policing bill that we've all heard about tonight makes this maybe a little more palatable, but not really. I mean, the point that I wanted to make was because we had a non-pursuit law in the state of Washington that legislators voted on, so our police and people couldn't do the job, this has cost our city, my number's close to 800,000? All the products that we had stolen from the maintenance yard, all the product, the fencing you asked us to build, that we had to do, all the private security we've had to hire, plus another 250,000 that we're asking for tonight, that could have gone to something more needful in our community. It could have gone to the diaper drive, it could have gone to helping the day center, it could have gone to the food bank, it could have gone to pickleball courts, it could have gone to anything. And that's the message, I think, that I wanted to make sure while we're talking about this. We're fortunate that our representatives changed their mind and voted to put this law back on the books, that we'll be able to benefit from in another 90 days. But I think the citizens just need to know, this is unnecessary money that we had to pay because of legislation that was maybe suspect when it was passed. But I'm going to, I support that we have to do this because we have to keep our citizens safe, we have to protect the goods of the city so this doesn't happen again. But that's why, and I think Councilmember McDaniel wanted this pulled so we could discuss it also in that meeting, and it's not the money, it's the, just the process and the cost of doing business in the city because of poor, in my opinion, just my personal opinion, poor judgment that came out of Olympia a few years ago.
Yeah, thank you. Councilmember Honda?
Thank you. So is this security that drives around, or do, will they be staying at the, at Dumas Bay or at the PAC during an event?
We can do both. The way we envision it is that they will be monitoring the parking lots, so they may be driving within the parking lot, but they would not leave the site. So the more that they can move around the site, and then the addition of, you know, we don't want to telegraph all of our plans. So when the new masked units come in, that might be a nice way to throw the criminals off a little bit by having that appear. Then one-night security, live security, there could be lots of different ways that we could go about this. But they would be onsite. If we had a particular event that we wanted to protect, whether it's a center stage event or a large overnight retreat at the, at Dumas Bay, which happens far more frequently, all of those things, or the community center has a big event, and they've, they've experienced a problem, we can be nimble and have them in there within 24 hours, if, as needed. Plus, and they already do our large events, like they guard Celebration Park, because we set up the day before at Celebration Park for red, white, and blues. We have all that high-end sound equipment and lights and a lot of different things on that field. We have onsite security that stays right there and patrols that site.
So is it just nighttime, or is it in the daytime if there is events going on?
We could use daytime if we chose to. It wouldn't be.
I mean, crime happens all the time.
It happens all the time, but you don't, we have far more incidents of crime at night, obviously. I would think Chief would probably support that statement. But we could do that if we, if we felt the need, we could absolutely do that. And this provides us the ability to be nimble and, and throw a curveball at the criminals once in a while, so.
We had, I had a friend whose daughter's car was broken into in another city window, and she has a little girl who's four, and the little girl's backpack was taken with her dance clothes in it. And the little girl is just beside herself and crying because someone took her things. And she's so little, it's something she'll never forget. And I, and it was in the daytime, in the driveway.
Wow.
Just.
Opportunistic criminals are just awful.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. Councilmember McDaniel?
Yeah, I just want to thank Councilmember Dovi for bringing me back around to what we originally had talked about on that one. And I was trying to calculate the math in my head, and it was getting too high, the numbers, for like you had mentioned. My last follow-up question is going to be on the PAC. We had heard recently that they do hire security separate for events. Will this be covering that security need for them then?
Probably not. We like that being in their model. They know exactly when they want to protect, and they do a really good job over there of protecting. Knock on wood, we've had less incidents there recently. I was just there at a show last Thursday night, and was greeted by security at the front door, there was security in the parking lot, and it was a sold-out show, it was pretty fantastic. So I, I felt good about being a customer there and leaving my car in the parking lot. So they did a good job. They, they have a good relationship with the security company that, and the, and the officers that they're using, just as we do.
And is the, what are the four locations, give me one more time, just so I verify, it's the community center?
The four new locations?
Yeah.
This is at minimum, we can do Steel Lake Maintenance Yard, DBC, Dumas Bay Center, the PAC, and the Federal Way Community Center. But we could also, if we needed them somewhere else, we have a good relationship with this company. We just get them the address, and they come to a walkthrough with us, and so they know what to tell their guards to be especially watching for, where any vulnerability may be, so they can keep an eye on that.
And this security, do they just reach out to police then if anything pops up?
Yes.
Okay. Are they armed or not armed?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Dovi? Oh, okay. All right, Councilmember Tran, do you have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the proposed contract amendment and authorize the mayor to execute said amendment.
Second.
There's been a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Matter passed unanimously. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
All right, number nine ordinances, this is the second reading and enactment. Item A for Council Bill 875, ordinance parking recreational vehicles on city streets in non-residential zones. Let's see here. Would the city clerk please read the ordinance title?
Council Bill 875, ordinance parking recreational vehicles on city streets in non-residential zones, an ordinance of the city of Federal Way, Washington, relating to recreational vehicles parking on city streets, adding a new section to Chapter 8.50, Federal Way Revised Code.
All right, Councilmember Dovi, do you have a motion?
Yeah, I move approval of the proposed ordinance.
Second.
There's been a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Matter passed unanimously. All right, now we're on to council reports. It's the first meeting of the month. We'll start with Councilmember Sepadoss.
Thank you, Mayor. Earlier, we did celebrate Women's, National Women's Night, National, what is it, Women's History Month? And I just wanted to list a few people who are in leadership, elected officials here in our city. So school board, we have Dr. Jennifer Jones, Lakeisha Phillips, Trudy James, and Joan Marie Murphy. And then with the fire, we have Commissioner Caroline Vedino, and Lake Haven, she was here, Laura, I don't know if she's still here, Belvin. And then I also wanted to say thank you to all the boards and commissioners who serve our city in that capacity. And so, and then of course, Kealan, who was here, and again, everyone who, oh, you're still here, okay. And yeah, just wanted to acknowledge that. And also our superintendent, Dr. Pfeifer. So there's a lot of leaders, women leaders here in our city, and just wanted to acknowledge. And with that, I end my report. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. They make the city better. Thank you. Councilmember McDaniel?
Actually, my report's kind of like sometimes I come here and I learned something throughout the two weeks that we're here. And on Saturday, after teaching a couple of classes for kids at the Jitsu, I went over to the Walmart to buy a new pair of sunglasses, because I broke mine. And as I was driving by the PAC, there was about eight people lined up with shopping carts, sitting there making dills and smoking stuff off aluminum. And so I got out of my car and started taking pictures, and I had one of the gentleman come up to me and talk to me about taking the picture. And at the time, my mind was not very clear. I was a little upset at the time, and I wasn't probably the nicest to the person. But in retrospect, it was an opportunity to have a conversation with somebody, and I lost the opportunity. So my report is, when the opportunity does come, I'm going to take it next time, and if you guys ever get the opportunity, gentleman was sober at the time, and I should have taken the opportunity to talk to him. But I am completely upset with the amount of open drug usage that was going on, so. And I have a question. When that happens, am I supposed to call 911? Am I supposed to report on the eyes of Federal Way? Or what is the recommendation?
I would suggest, number one, I would call 911 if you see that. That'd be the first thing. And then, you know, we all, you know, I would even, sometimes when I see something like that happen, there are certain, certain circumstances where if I, there's a, I had a situation recently where a car was blocking First Avenue. And I, I sometimes what I'll do is just to make sure, because I know there's people on duty, I called the chief, and I just said, hey, we'd better get somebody over here to, because it's blocking, it's dangerous for everybody involved. So you're welcome to call me, and we can make sure, you know, we've got a, you know, internal communications. But I think it is important for the 911 call to be placed if you see any kind of criminal activity taking place. Once the call comes in, then it's recorded.
Got you. I'll do that next time.
All right, thank you. All right, Councilmember Honda?
Thank you. I'd like to offer prayers for State Patrol Officer Christopher Gad's family. He was officer that was in his patrol car on I-5 over the weekend and was killed. And just prayers for his family, his fellow officers, and his community. As a parent of a police officer, it's something I worry about all the time. And I can't imagine getting that phone call that, that this happened, so prayers for, for his family. I'd like to also thank our service clubs in Federal Way. We are so fortunate to have the service clubs we do because they do a lot of work. They, they do everything from Easter egg hunts to car shows to a lot of scholarships. I think every service club gives out scholarships to either high school students. Quanis gives out a scholarship to the Boy Scout troop that we sponsor. The Sir Optimus just gave out two scholarships last week to women who are head of the household, who are going back to school. And, you know, we're just really, really fortunate in Federal Way for having the service clubs that we, that we do. And I'm proud to be a member of two of them. Tomorrow is the Best of Federal Way celebration at the community center. I think it starts at 5:30. Kealan, is that the right time? So please come and celebrate businesses and whoever for Best of Federal Way. And I'd also like to end with the sidewalk letter. We have a sidewalk ordinance here in Federal Way, and I would love for the city council to revisit that and to have a good discussion about it. I met with several folks last fall, and the mayor, and our public works director, and I've done a lot of research on this, and I think we can make it better, and we can make it better for our community. So I would love to see us have a good discussion on this. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Tran?
Thank you, Mayor. So this is going to be my very first trip to D.C. after serving on this council for the last six years. So I'm really looking forward to it, to represent the people of Federal Way. So to calm your fear, I did look up to see what type of aircraft that we are going to fly. Okay, so from here to Detroit, we will be flying Boeing 737-900 ER, not the MAX. And then from Detroit to Washington National, we will be flying Airbus A321. On the way back, we will be flying Airbus A321. So as long as I don't have to get on that MAX, I'm fine. Thank you.
If you do, don't ask for a window seat. All right, thank you. Councilmember Walsh?
All right. Hey, I, I want to thank the, the Senior Commission for the, for the great work they do and, and coming here to, in their support for a senior center. I strongly support having a senior center here within the city of Federal Way. I want to remind seniors in the community that there is a Federal Way Senior Center that is outside the city limits, but it still serves the, the people there. So in the meantime, you make, make good use of it, it does a lot of good. And when the time comes that we have a senior center here in the federal, within the city, I hope that they're able to, to work cooperatively to serve the, the community as, as a whole. And Councilmember Honda mentioned the Best of Federal Way. Come tomorrow, I have it on good authority that there will be some nice treats.
Now, the, the last time I went to the senior center over there, not only was he serving up food, they had him singing as well. So we have a full-service city council member. Thank you. Councilmember Dovi?
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of things. One, I want to thank Bill Vedino for spearheading our financial classes in Federal Way. We don't only have one, we have two going, which I think is just a great testament to this council that we're funding classes for people who want to learn more about how to manage their finances for free, and getting good knowledge that run anywhere from six to nine weeks. So I wanted to thank Bill for spearheading that, and the council for thinking it's important and voting the money to make that happen. I am flying a MAX tomorrow to Orlando, so, you know, if it's not Boeing, you're not going, right? And, because those Airbus's have that, when they take off, so, you know, Boeing always sounds better. And lastly, I learned tonight that I am one of the 14% of seniors that actually could use a senior center. So Jack, let's figure out how to do it. I mean, you, you can join me there. So that's my report.
Yeah, I'm one of the young old. Haven't made it to the old, old yet. Well, thank you very much for all of you being here this evening, and for those who are listening from home. I just want to say, let's work together to continue to make our community a place we're proud to call our home.
Great, thank you. And, and everybody at council, I, we will work with staff and work together to follow up on the following items. Well, you're going to get information back in regard to PAC naming rights and where they're at. We're going to follow up about a senior center. I've received communication with Tonia Carter regarding discussions that are ongoing about the senior center, and we will communicate with you about that. Then we're going to, you're going to hear something about public health and about where they're at with that. they're at with that, we'll reach out to our, Bill, we'll need to reach out with King County Councilmember Peabody Rankbauer about the public health facility and we'll follow up with the sidewalk discussion about the direction we want to go. With that, we've concluded our business, we are adjourned, thank you.